Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is the zoning board of appeals meeting scheduled for Thursday, October 30th at 6:00 PM. First, we're gonna call to order the meeting. Can I get a motion? And a second to call the order? I don't think they heard who.
I make question, we call the meeting to order?
I second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay, number two, approval of the minutes.
We have to do roll call.
Yeah, we need to get a roll call in there, somewhere it should be.
Okay, okay, well.
All order being rolled.
Okay, well, it wasn't on here. I'm going by this. Okay, we'll do roll call.
What time was the meeting called to?
6:00, 6:00 PM. Roll call. Commissioner Norma McDaniel.
I think she's supposed to do it.
You're supposed to do roll call?
Yes.
Uh, the chair.
No, the chair never does roll call. You're supposed to do it.
Oh, you are, that's right.
No, I don't have a chair.
Our chairman, Norma McDaniel.
Beg your pardon?
Roll call.
No, but she called me a chair, I'm not the chair.
It's on here, it's on the old minister's chair. And you're not, you've never been a chair.
Commissioner. Point of clarification.
Secretary.
I'm a secretary, she's.
Chair. And I don't know who else, somebody is something else.
Ruthie is vice chair.
Vice chair.
If I get to be that, I wouldn't do it. Make me shut up.
I chaired the last meeting, that's why, I guess it showed up.
Yeah, cuz I wasn't here.
Alright, I'm gonna call members, so I'll start with secretary, Norma McDaniel.
Present.
We have vice chair, Ruthie Williams.
Present.
We have commissioner, Evelyn Zee.
Present.
Chairman Kimberly Johnson, Chairwoman Kimberly Johnson, my apologies.
Yeah.
We have Chair Manola Williams.
Present.
We have Chairwoman Rebecca Daniels.
We're commissioners.
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 Okay, I'm just calling your names, Patrice Patton. Alright, everyone, we have a form.
I am president, Rebecca Daniels.
Did you call your name?
I have everybody, yes.
Okay, approval of the minutes from the City of Inglewood zoning board of appeals meeting that was held on Thursday, June 5th, 2025, 6:00 PM. City council chambers, and it was open to the public.
I make motion that we accept the minutes with any necessary corrections?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? New business. Case number 25-024500, Inglewood Road, Inglewood, Michigan, 48141. Bullet A, minimum front yard setback requirement is 25 feet. Demby is deficient in the 25 feet along Inglewood Road, Lehigh, Moore Circle, Moore Street, and Annapolis Avenue. Bullet B, the minimum side yard setback requirement is 15 feet from each structure. Demby is or will be deficient in 15 feet for the proposed parcel A along the proposed east and north property lines. Bullet C, minimum side yard setback requirement is 15 feet from each structure. Demby is or will be deficient in the 15 feet for the proposed parcel B along the proposed north and south property lines. Bullet D is in David. Minimum side yard setback requirement is 15 feet from each structure. Demby is or will be deficient in 15 feet for the proposed parcel C along the proposed south and west property lines. Bullet E, minimum side yard setback requirement is 15 feet from each structure. Demby is or will be deficient in 15 feet for the proposed parcel D along the proposed north property line. Bullet F, minimum lot area, the requirement for proposal C is 32,000 square feet, which equals 4,000 square feet of lot area per dwelling unit. Proposed parcel C, Demby, has only 16,998 square feet of lot area. Bullet G, minimum lot area, the requirement for proposed parcel D is 128,000 square feet, equals 4,000 square feet of lot area per dwelling unit. Proposed parcel D, Demby, has only 91,384 feet of lot area. The zoning board of appeals is meeting to adjourn the zoning petition variances requested by Inglewood Housing Commission, Demby Terrace, 4500 Inglewood Road, Inglewood, Michigan. Four, any other business? Five, general public comment? That would be.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're good.
I'm gonna read the letter that.
Would you state your name and where you're from?
I'm Elliot Patton, I'm the procurement and compliance manager with Inglewood Housing Commission.
Procurement required.
We are in the middle of redeveloping all of the properties at Inglewood Housing. Demby, Lemoine, Parkside, the Towers eventually too. As part of our redevelopment and as part of HUD's requirement for us to redevelop, we need to take the office building out of the residential property lot lines. So, to do that, we're required to get the zoning variance. Our attorneys did a lot of research and a lot of stuff and put most of this petition together. So, I'm gonna read through their letter, which states pretty much everything. That's fine.
Okay.
Honorable members of the zoning board of appeals, my name is Milton Spikagney and the attorney for Inglewood Housing Commission. I'd ask this honorable body to favorably consider the zoning board of appeals petition submitted by the Inglewood Housing Commission for variances of the Lot 1 of the property located at 4500 Inglewood Road, Inglewood, Michigan, also known as a portion of the Demby Terrace development property. It should be noted, the property is located on an existing 5.3778 acre site, and the buildings consist of 181 residential units and a leasing office. In this regard, you may know the Inglewood Housing Commission was created by the City of Inglewood in the 1950s, when this property was constructed around 1964 and 1990, as originally owned by the City of Inglewood. Subsequently, the property and several other properties owned by the City of Inglewood were conveyed to the City of Inglewood by quitclaim deed to the Inglewood Housing Commission, June 13th, 2023, copy of which is attached. When this property was originally built as residential multiple units, it was properly zoned and built accordingly to the zoning ordinance that was in effect at that time. However, at this time, the apartment complex does not meet current zoning requirements for setbacks in the minimum lot area for our zoning district due to the property being pre-existing building. Therefore, the property would be considered pre-existing non-conforming use. As a current owner of the property, Inglewood Housing Commission is simply requesting this body to consider granting the following zoning variances, which you just read, in order to allow the property to be considered a conforming use, both currently and in connection with the anticipated lot split that will create proposed parcels A through D. The ZBA should be made aware of the fact that the property, subject to certain conditions precedent, will be ground leased to a private developer who plans to redevelop the property and to place the property on the city's tax rolls through a pilot already approved by city council. One of the conditions that must be met is the approval of the above listed variances and a lot split. Must be emphasized that by granting the variances in question, it would allow the currently exempt parcel of property be placed on the city's tax rolls and generate tax revenue under a pilot, under the pilot that would permit the city to deliver services not only to residents of the property, but to the surrounding community as well. Moreover, the granting of the variances would enable the rehabilitation and revitalization of the property to the current building standards. Would ensure the availability of housing that would be beneficial to the community as a whole by providing housing that is both accessible and affordable. In addition, it would ensure that the residents' health, safety, and welfare would be protected by delivering modern housing that meets the latest building standards. In addition to granting the, in addition, granting the variances would serve as a holistic betterment of the entire community. In conclusion, it must be emphasized that this property has always been used as a multiple dwelling apartment since the property was originally built in 1964 and 1990. As previously stated, it was City of Inglewood that actually built these 181 residential units and the leasing office at the current site. The applicant is asking nothing more than to permit the continued use and operation of the buildings as conforming uses.
Okay, at this point, we would take any questions from the audience? We don't have no audience, so we're gonna take questions from any board commissioners that have any.
I have a question. How else, it says in this document that it would help service the other communities, and I know you're already servicing the need for housing, but what else would it do?
It would help occupy, it would allow us to move forward with rehabilitation and modernization with the rest of the lot.
So aesthetically, it would look better as well?
Aesthetically, it will look better, but there're gonna be total rehabilitations. There's not gonna be any new construction, but the buildings are gonna be essentially gutted, the roofs are gonna be taken off, and new roofs are gonna be put on, new electrical's gonna be put in, new plumings, new cabinetry, new appliances, new.
Would it be considered still low-income housing, or would it just be?
It'll move to affordable housing.
It'll move to what?
Affordable housing.
So what phases are we talking? When does the phase start in this Demby area? I'm understanding that Phase 1 starts in Lemoine, Phase 2 starts Parkside, then Demby area is the last?
It's changed quite a bit, just depending on things, government shutdowns and so on and so forth. Our timeline as of now would be, we would start with Demby and Parkside. The exact date's up in the air, but we're hoping to start early next year with Demby and Parkside. And then Twin Towers would be our next project, and then Lemoine, quarter 3, quarter 4 next year.
I got one more question and I'll be done. The spaces that you guys took down, homes in those areas, are they gonna have rebuilt places there?
I'm not sure about us taking down any homes.
When I went through there, I noticed that you guys had took a lot off, just say.
Yeah, there are some.
Homes, there's spaces where they used to be like, oh, we're gonna say one home that I noticed that was gone. It was a four-family home. I mean, they had like four bedrooms in there. So, it's a lot of spaces in there now. Will they be occupied, the space?
There, to my knowledge, and I've been with the commission now two years, the housing commission two years, to my knowledge, there were some fire damage units over time, and those buildings were no longer able to be maintained or put back into a usable state, so they had to be torn down.
So they won't be replaced, that you know of, or you're not sure?
On the rehabilitation side, it hasn't been discussed yet, but still possibilities.
Okay, well, I got a question. So now they're gonna be affordable as opposed to low income, and they're going on the tax roll, so where does the Inglewood Housing Commission come in? Or is there still gonna be an Inglewood Housing Commission? Because I know those units are not on the tax roll because they're low-income and by city. So, it's gonna be affordable and put back on the tax rolls. There is no more Inglewood housing for low income?
It's a good question.
That is going to be the overseer of these units once they're occupied? And what are you gonna do with the low-income people? You probably can answer that question.
It's, it's, it's a loaded question.
Yeah, it's a good question.
Which means it's got a loaded answer.
Yeah.
So.
I'm just curious, cuz going back on the tax rolls, like, going on the tax rolls, these units don't go on the tax, oh, okay.
Good question. So, our developers that are working with us to convert this from public housing to affordable housing, we're going after state tax credits and additionally some state historic tax credits, not at Demby Parkside, but at Demby Parkside, there'll be low-income, oh, I'm sorry, low-income tax credits that they'll get as part of the money that they're bringing in to do all the rehabilitation. In the public housing sphere, we get subsidy from HUD.
HUD, right, they're HUD subsidized.
That subsidy is a yearly budget amount that Congress gets to figure out what they're gonna do. And it's the same amount for a two-bedroom unit in Inglewood as it is for a two-bedroom unit in Los Angeles. It's just what Congress sets out every year. By moving these over to affordable housing and taking them into a project-based voucher, kinda like Section 8, it allows us to then, instead of just being subject to the subsidy, we're then the landlord and then getting the voucher money as the landlord. And a lot of the rules between public housing and vouchers are really, really close.
So, then the administration or the administer of this housing will no longer be under Inglewood?
Not necessarily. We'll still, it'll be ground leased, it'll still be owned by Inglewood Housing Commission.
Okay.
But it'll be a partnership with us and the developer for, I wanna say, I want like 30, 40 years, I can't remember the exact number, but it's a long-term number.
So, the residents that are there will still have an opportunity to remain just on a different criteria, possibly?
Yeah, essentially, in a new unit, essentially.
Interesting, okay.
Very interesting.
I have a question.
Very interesting because. This doesn't.
So, I have a question.
I have a question. Where the residents gonna be while this renovation is going on?
So, for the last few years, we've been strategic, and we're right now about 50% occupied. HUD has told us to do that cuz they want us to do what this conversion called RAD conversion to flip to affordable housing. So, in order to do that, as we're moving there, they want us to not lease up as much cuz there's not enough money to maintain it all as it is, even with the subsidy. So they've told us to leave vacancies so that when we start construction, they're gonna start on a vacant building that's completely vacant. They'll ready that, and then we'll move residents into that unit that's already completely rehabilitated.
There's quite a few vacancies.
Once we, then once we get the next building emptied, then we'll start rehabilitation and modernization on that building.
You indicated that the administration building may be moved?
No.
No.
What, we, so right now, the property line is, the entire block is all one. In order to do this, we need to separate the office building from the revenue generating buildings. So we have to draw its own property line, essentially.
So the reason, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Chair recognizes Ms. Daniels, Commissioner Daniels.
So actually, the variances that you're asking for this approval has nothing really to do with the apartments? It's more sort of to do with the administrative building, right?
Essentially, yeah.
Even though we, she, we got this A, B, C, D, E, F, G?
It would, because the office building is in the middle of the lot, we'd have to carve it out into its own. It's gonna essentially create four new lots.
Because the back of the office building abuts Lehigh, Annapolis, and Moore, and there's an empty, there's an empty, like, space in between there, green, a green area, right?
Like a courtyard area.
Called the SAC roundabout thing, yeah, I know what you mean.
And while I have the floor, you mentioned something earlier about the pilot and the exempt taxes during that time, and you said, "and surrounding neighbors." So, who are the surrounding neighbors that this exemption would? Are you still talking about within the housing or outside?
Just within.
Just within, so why do you need to use that verbiage when you say "and"?
Because as we do all this redevelopment, it's gonna make the neighborhood as a whole better.
But they're not getting, but they're not getting any, the ones that surround it, they're not gonna really benefit.
It's just gonna make the whole neighborhood better.
But not with regard to taxes?
Not regarding to taxes.
But it sounds like that's what it's saying.
Gotcha.
So it's for parents?
Yeah, I think we need to change that word, verbiage, because it sounds, it's a little deceptive because it sounds like it's saying that the neighboring communities that surround that area would get this benefit too.
That's why I asked, it would benefit the community.
That's why I thought you were starting out there, but it didn't end up there, so I wanted to make sure I reiterate on that.
The benefit, the benefit is that now there's gonna be tax revenue generated. You're at this side of the street, over here, your neighbor's not paying taxes at all. Now your neighbor will start paying taxes, so it's a benefit to the community as a whole.
Yeah, cuz Annapolis, that's Westland over there. And then I don't think the rest of Inglewood housing units obeyed any other city other than Westland.
They don't.
Nope.
They don't.
They're on highs.
Go ahead.
Just to weigh in on the tax, for the record, Charlie Cratchfield, Special Projects Director, just to weigh in on the pilot or tax, just some avenue on that. So they won't, and historically, Inglewood Housing Commission obviously didn't pay any property taxes because they're nonprofit. So no tax revenue comes in, has been coming in from them. Now, I believe the pilot is $50,000 or $75,000 a year that they will be paying for their properties that are included in a partnership. So that benefit would be for the community because those are tax dollars that hadn't been received in the past. Just, so just to give some tidbit on how the funds will go, it does go to the entire community.
That's good, though.
To cover those services.
But at the same time, but at the same time, and I understood that, I really did, but I didn't, I think that what, the part that I'm just finding just, I don't know, confusing is he's saying that it will benefit the surrounding areas, and I don't think that that's actually true.
We're saying that only in the aspect of, right now, we're, because we're Inglewood Housing Commission, we're an independent government entity of sorts, just like the city, we're exempt from taxes. As we move forward into this, we'll actually start paying some taxes as opposed to zero.
Which would affect the whole.
But not the surrounding, so I think you're missing the whole point, I'm trying to.
I'm just saying, we're just saying like ad nauseam, it's a benefit to the community as a whole.
Community versus the surrounding area.
Not to the exact neighbor next door, but to the neighborhood as a whole.
The whole city.
The whole city.
The whole city.
And it would be nice for it to look better, you have to agree on that.
Well, I'm not, yeah, I'm honest aesthetically, because I remember when this all started out, it's gonna be a beautiful setup. But I just wanna make sure that we're not putting these words out that are not actually true, and it sounds like we are saying something that's not actually what's happening with regard to the community around it benefiting.
Well, we still have the community around it because Inglewood housing units sit in the regular neighborhoods of Inglewood.
But not with regard to the exempt of taxes during this pilot, cuz that's what it stated. If you go back to where he started saying something about what it would do, he read something about not only would this pilot be, during the pilot, that they're getting some benefits, and it's surrounding there. And, that's the part that I'm talking about.
What you want him to clarify is a surrounding area, you mean other cities or the surrounding areas in Inglewood?
Cuz I know we can't even, cities is not, my, yeah.
You're talking about the adjacent area around the property, around the property.
Yeah, that's what.
When we wrote that, we just meant to the community as a whole.
Right.
Not to the exact neighbor across the street, we're talking Inglewood community as a whole.
Yeah.
And not with regard to their taxes?
No, just, we're just saying that we're adding to the tax base, not detracting from it.
Okay, so I think we need to reword that, though. Okay, you just added to the tax base, period.
Is there a timeline to the pilot?
It's for the length of the partnership, so I think.
Don't remember what the exact term.
But it's whatever the terms are, so either 30 or 45 years, and it matches up with the Mitch the tax credit. So it's stating, everybody has their own timeline for, I'll let you. Every entity has their own timeline, like for state, federal, we don't have county affordable tax breaks, but everyone would set the guidelines of, hey, if we give you some money, you have to keep it affordable or low-income for 20 years or X, Y, and Z. So the pilot that city council approved aligns with the minimum affordability. So you're only getting this perk as long as these are affordable houses.
Okay.
I got one more.
I have another question.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Williams.
When you guys did the study on this, did you guys do the study about the fact how you had streets in the Demby area and the Parkside area blocked off?
We did not.
Okay.
And I can answer to the.
That's something that needs to be looked at.
I can answer to the why on that.
Okay.
That's actually a simple answer, even though you'd think it'd be loaded. We don't own the streets, the city owns the streets, so the city is the one that.
Demby.
The city is the one that closed the streets. We don't have a say in that.
The city closed those streets off, and I didn't think the fire department was gonna let it happen because some of them streets is only one way in and one way out, which is dangerous. So at some point in time, the city may have to go back and reevaluate, especially if they wanna change this to affordable housing, cuz it sounds like you're gonna try to attract another kind of clientele to live there. I don't think they're gonna live there with them closed off streets.
We're open to that conversation, but as of right now, we don't own that part of, that property as a city street.
That needs to be directed, cuz you got Spruce, you got Hickory.
And I'm surprised that the developers haven't addressed it.
They've brought it up, but then we've talked to the police department, we've heard one thing, and then fire department says another, so. Right now, Moore Street is being reconstructed cuz they're doing a water.
Cuz they're doing two, yeah.
And the construction workers said that they were gonna dig it up as part of the redevelopment, but just yesterday, they'd put them back in, so we didn't. The ball, yeah, yeah. So, we're definitely open to conversation on it, but right now, we don't own it.
It's dangerous.
It wasn't.
What's gonna happen to the low-income residents?
So, the rules and regs for low-income versus affordable are almost the same. To qualify for a voucher, it's, your rent is 30% of your income. On the public housing side, it's 30% of your income. So it's still essentially the same calculation.
Affordable housing, they will still get a voucher?
They would, the, in affordable housing, it's called a project-based voucher, and the voucher is attached to the unit itself, it's not assigned to a person.
Right.
Oh, so the voucher is attached to the unit?
Yeah, that's the difference.
Depending on if it's a two-bedroom or a three-bedroom will determine the price of the voucher, correct, basically?
Based on the income of the resident.
Well, how is it for low-income, is it the same thing?
It's the same, same, same 30% rule.
No, but it's attached, it's attached to the.
The difference is, is it's public, it's low-income public housing. By switching to these tax credits and switching to a voucher system, it takes us out of the public housing sphere. Gets us away from the budget, congressional budget subsidy item. The voucher money is then.
Well, see, cuz they live there now, Inglewood housing is HUD subsidized, so they do their own subsidies. They'll open up a voucher list, when you get a voucher from HUD, you could take it anywhere in the United States to use it. But if you're living in Inglewood housing, you're going on their HUD stipulations.
It'll become a project-based voucher, which is a little different. The only difference is that the unit is attached, the voucher is attached to the unit. You can't take the voucher with you.
For affordable housing?
Yes.
What about low-income?
It's the same.
You can't take the.
It's just low-income public housing.
They can't take, the ones that are living there now can't take vouchers and go anywhere because right now, Inglewood housing does not operate under a voucher system. It operates under a HUD subsidy system, which is based on income.
So that's gonna change.
That's gonna change.
Changes the name, and it's changing the revenue model. The revenue model will go to, instead of being the subsidy item, which is a budgetary congressional decided number every year, instead of being that, it'll go to a voucher, so we'll get revenue based off of it being occupied, based off of their income, and we would get the 70%, the tenant would pay the 30%, but that voucher is a percentage, and it's not tied to a budgetary item, it's actually tied to market rate.
Market rate.
So it actually would generate more revenue for the property, so we'll be able to continue to put more money back into the property over time.
Because see, they're not living there on the vouchers now. The residents that are there.
They're not?
No, they're not.
Right now, it's just, this is what Congress has said the budget is this year.
They're under HUD budget and Inglewood budget.
In Inglewood, or a two-bedroom in Los Angeles, two-bedroom in Miami, that's what the two-bedroom rate is.
That's what it's gonna change to, but right now, it's solely based on income. They don't, when they leave Inglewood housing, say right now, if somebody moved out, they're not getting a voucher to go somewhere else to live in low-income housing. They just gotta find someplace else that there are subsidies. Every now and then, well, in light of this administration we got going on in Washington, Incester will open up their voucher program where you can apply to get a voucher, which allows you to stay in Incester Housing, Amuda Hawaii. They're gonna have a voucher system once this new private entity comes in, which is not what we have now, but it's just solely based on income and HUD.
Who was the developer? Who is, who is, who are they?
At Parkside and Denby, it is Good Housing Partnership.
The what?
Good Housing Partnership.
So it's two different?
There's a couple of different developers, depending on the property.
Side, Parkside and who?
It's called Good Housing.
Parkside and Denby.
And Denby?
The developers, Good Housing Partners.
Good Housing Partners.
It's our Good Housing Partnership.
Good Housing Partners. Oh, why, why different partners? Okay, and then for?
Lemoine, we have the Richmond Group.
Richmond?
Richmond Group. R.I.C.H.
M.O.N.D.?
Either M.O.N.D. or M.A.N.D., sorry.
Is there a D on it?
D N, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Why are there two different?
And then Twin Towers or so?
Uh, we haven't selected developer partner yet for Twin Towers. We were originally gonna do.
Why do they separate it? I have one more question for you.
So it comes back to the tax credits.
Oh.
There's different levels of tax credit. There's a nine percent low-income housing tax credit. You gotta apply for that with the state through Mishta, Michigan State Housing Development Agency. They only give out, all three, they only give out one tax credit to every three applicants they get on the nine percent.
Oh, so that's why they had to separate it?
Right, we didn't want to have to compete with ourselves. Um, the four percent tax credit, they essentially just kinda give out as needed on a rolling basis, like three or four times a year. Um, but we wanted to separate it out because Lemoine was originally supposed to be a complete teardown and a new build. But because we couldn't get that nine percent tax credit, that meant there was a big, 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 big financing gap. So they're switching to a historic, uh, model in which we'll get a four percent tax credit for low-income housing tax credit, and then an additional four percent low-income historic tax credit. Um, and we're working on getting that put on the National Historic Registry with National Park Service, but that's in delay too. Cause nobody's at the park service.
Chair recognize Commissioner Williams got a question.
I, I got one question for you, uh, because I, I keep, and I know this has been in process for a while. But my concern is that you guys still meeting? Cause at one time, I know you had the public come in and meet about some of these and discuss some of these things and take their input. But my question is still about Lemoine Garden have blocked streets, Denby area got blocked streets. Are you guys still meeting? So this can be a subject that's brought up.
About the blocked streets?
Yeah.
Or anything.
About the blocked streets? No, because we don't own them. It's, it's not a.
But when, okay, and I hear what you're saying when you say you don't own them, but when that got put in and Ed Bibbins was around back a lot in the years. When they got brought in there, but you got streets over there that people are paying taxes for their homes, they can't come in their own.
Yeah, Moore, Spruce, Hickory.
Hickory. I, I'm, see, it's, it's.
They can't come in from Annapolis, yeah.
I mean, like, because we don't own them, we can't push the action on it?
But because you guys wanna build affordable houses, now you got new residents coming there and they can't get to their homes or, or wherever they, you know, live in. Spruce and Annapolis is blocked off.
Yeah, I can't see that was, that's even legal.
They building, so they should take it up with the.
But they don't own it. They don't own the street.
They don't own the street.
But the street, the city, I was working for the city when they went in there and did that.
I know you were.
Incester Housing, they had, Incester Housing Commission had no say-so over there. That was strictly done by the police department and the administration.
Shitting they wanted.
At that time, Incester Housing Commission was just another city department, just like the police department or.
But they're taking it down, they're taking down.
We'll be happy to be part of the conversation.
They're putting them back up out there to do the supers.
That's the issue. If I'm buying, I mean, I'm, I'm buying affordable house, and now I'm buying something into this. Now I only can get it in my house one way. That's not fair. They wanna bring some new development to our community.
For them to bring it up to the city. Yeah, the builders.
We've discussed it, but like I said, we hear one thing from the police department, something else from the fire department, so we'll be happy to be part of the conversation.
My department should be glad.
I'd be happy to be part of the conversation.
They can't even go down.
That's all I can say.
Well, I would hope that police see that question.
Right, I mean, but they jump over cars and stuff.
Mr. Daniels, you got a question?
I'm gonna let her go first. I know she's been just sitting here so patiently.
She sure has. Commissioner Pat?
I have a question. So is there a mirrored community that's gonna, that's like what you're trying to propose? Is there a community in the area of the like?
Um.
Say affordable housing, what's affordable as to rate?
Trying to think of what their names are off the top of my head, sorry. Uh, some of the other housing commissions in the area, Michigan's unique. Uh, the fact that every municipality has a housing commission essentially. Taylor has gone through the RAD conversion process. They've taken their public housing already into the affordable housing sphere. They did what's called a straight conversion. They did it themselves. They didn't bring in a developer partner. They didn't go after any tax credits. So they bring in a whole bunch of money to rehabilitate them like we're, we're proposing to do.
So no, there's not a mirrored community in the area?
Not mirrored, but there's communities that have done the conversion. Detroit has done some of the, uh, the tax credit conversions.
But when, but when you say affordable, what rate are we speaking of?
So when we say affordable, it's just that it, it, affordable means that it becomes a voucher property, and the rules for the vouchers then apply to those. But it's a percentage, all that's tied back to the market rates.
Right, so it could be, so people that are live, currently living here now, most likely won't be able to have a voucher that would cover the affordable housing.
The voucher would cover.
Cause those people would, will be displaced.
They would pay thirty percent of their income as their rent. The voucher would cover the other seventy percent of the market rate.
So is there a qualifier?
Remember, it's thirty percent of their income, not the market rate.
Right, but is it, is there a qualifier? So once the project is completed, is there a qualifier as to what your, say, monthly or yearly wage would be? So do you have to at least save thirty, do you have to make fifty thousand dollars a year or thirty thousand dollars a year?
It's just thirty percent of their income.
Because I, you have some people in Incester Housing, even though they go by market rates over there, you have some people that paying a hundred and fifty dollars a month on rent based on their income and based on what the market rate is for those low-income units. And you have some people that are paying zero. But it's all based on thirty percent of their income, which this is gonna be the same model, okay?
The percentage as a whole, instead of being tied to a subsidy, is just tied to the market rate.
With no extra qualifiers or?
No extra qualifiers. What that does long-term is that sets the revenue model up. Cause right now, it's a subsidy, it tied to a congressional appropriation. So right now, it's congressional appropriation between what the parties want to argue about in DC, and that's the set rate. Whereas we switch to this affordable model, it takes that voucher and ties it to the market rate. It's not a number that's actually set in Congress.
And here's another example, Commissioner Pat. Say the market rate over there for two-bedroom is a thousand dollars. I can move it to Incester Housing, but I'm gonna pay that thousand dollars based on my income. You see what I'm saying? Right now.
I'm just trying to.
Yeah, I'm gonna pay that. But for those that make less than me, are only gonna pay thirty percent of their income, and then the voucher kicks in the other seventy percent. Mm-hmm, but we're gonna all walk in there paying market rate.
Ms. Daniels got a question.
Who has a question?
Ms. Daniels.
Commissioner Daniels?
Yeah, so, um. I know this like, um, Commissioner, um, Williams is saying, this has been going on for quite some time. And we went to several meetings, we got to the RED, and we, we got to, um, the affordable housing. And I think, um, and it's been a while since I've kinda like put this together. But the affordable housing is coming in so we, so we'll be able to get the funds. Cause without it being affordable housing, we wouldn't be able to get the funds.
Correct. We wouldn't, we wouldn't be, the developers wouldn't be able to get the tax credits.
Okay.
Which wouldn't pay off the loans and stuff that they're bringing in to make all these rehabilitations possible.
So, and I think so, I think, how, how are you, Incester Housing, able to make this be Incester Housing and affordable housing at the same time?
So there's a big change coming. Right now, Incester Housing is fifty percent occupied. By switching to affordable housing, doing a bunch of rehabilitation, essentially making these new unit, new units, or even replacing the flooring.
Right.
And laminate hardwood flooring.
Necessary, yes.
It's gonna be a new unit. With our waitlist, the demand for these apartments that we have now without all these is already big. Our current waitlist, there's about, I think the last number I heard was there were six hundred people waiting to move into what we currently have. That waitlist will still be around for the affordable housing. We'll then use those people on that waitlist, qualify them through all the affordable housing rules and regulations, and then get them into the new units. So we'll actually be able to improve it and service more residents, bring in more residents.
So, so how can we just, I don't know, I guess we're just probably gonna keep going back and forth with the Incester Housing and the affordable.
It'll still be owned by Incester Housing. There's a ground lease on it to our, to, to an LLC that we're forming with our partner, our developer partner.
So now you're forming an LLC?
Will be a fifty-one percent owner of that LLC.
Incester Housing will.
So that's how we're bringing in, that's how we're partnering up with them to get. I keep forgetting we're so close to the road. My office is down the street. I don't hear it that much. That's how we're bringing in the hundreds of millions of dollars to get this working.
So it sounds like the low-income people are gonna be really pushed out.
Of course.
No, not at all.
I don't know how they would not.
With all the rules and regulations around the RAD conversion itself, for us to get HUD to release their lien on the property, we have to conform to the RAD rules, and that says that anybody that lives there now is entitled.
To stay?
To stay there. We have to requalify them, but it's the same requirement for public housing as it is for affordable housing.
Okay.
Commissioner Pat, you still got a question?
So is there a time, is, is there a timeframe where it can move from affordable housing? Where, uh, the voucher system will not be in place? I say after five years.
That's the pilot, right?
No. The voucher system will be in place as long as the voucher systems stay in place.
The pilot only has to do with the taxes, right?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
We don't have any control over the voucher system. That's set by the federal government.
And that is in place.
The federal government completely does away with the voucher system. They would be doing that to the entire United States. That wouldn't just be an Incester decision. They can't do it just to one community.
Because it's still partially funded from the feds.
Just taking it away from a congressional appropriation to a voucher, which isn't tied to congressional appropriation, just tied to the market rate.
You got a question?
Yeah, um, you said that the ones that are there now have to re-qualify?
They have to re-qualify every year.
Oh, every year?
Oh, yeah, even now.
Every year you have to qualify.
But they get firsthand, oh, before you go to the waiting list?
So they're like first right of refusal?
Yeah, well, that, we actually, when we have to move them from unit A over to unit Z for the rebuild, we cover the moving cost. We hire the, actually, the developers hire the movers and move all their stuff for them.
They have a yearly review now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, to make sure they still qualify.
Yeah, you still have to qualify every year, currently and, and in the future.
Very informational, and it's good for us to know, so we can even help you guys when people are wanting to know.
Happy to have the conversation.
We have another question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Pat.
Has the city attorney looked at the proposal? Have you met with him?
Um, for this, um, I believe he has.
You believe he has, but not for sure.
Yeah.
The city of Incester's attorney or the Incester Housing Commission's attorney?
Who's attorney?
The city of Incester.
Or the Housing Commission, whoever would be.
Yeah, that's the, actually, the, um.
Mills Spikagi, that's who wrote it up. That's what he read.
That's the Housing Commission attorney.
That's Incester Housing's attorney.
What about, what about Incester's, the Incester's attorney?
They wouldn't have anything to do with it, right?
Well, they did weigh in on the pilot. City, city attorneys did, uh, review the pilot and give feedback for that. It was a really long contract that they reviewed for Mishta, um, but they.
So many involved, that's why I said I believe so.
So what was the result of the?
The, the pilot, um, so they, Incester Housing Commission requested a pilot. Um, I don't remember the, uh, the initial request, but after looking at the public services, fire, DPS, police, talking to the attorneys, um, we came to that amount. I wanna say seventy-five thousand dollars offhand, and I can actually just look it up.
Yeah, we went back and forth.
Quite a foot, just, um.
I'll say there was three or, two or three months went back.
Different prices, you know, different price points. We were looking at the services that are typically rendered, um, to the community to try to put a price point on it. But because we haven't done taxes before, it, there's not necessarily like, oh, this is the assessed value. It was a lot of guesstimation, so the attorneys did weigh in on that.
Were they, were they favorable?
Yes. The attorney's out of all our city council meetings, so I'm sure he would not have allowed council to move forward.
That's why I said I believe so. There were some, not only was there the city attorney involved, there was our attorney plus developer attorneys, so there were quite a few attorneys as well.
Commissioner Daniels?
I, I hope this is my last question. Cause this is, like I said, very informational. But the block, blockage that we're talking about, because that has always been a concern for me, and I understand why it was put there. But, um, I think even though you're saying that, that is owned by the city, and Commissioner Williams is saying, I think somebody said that it was unfair. I think more than being unfair, it's dangerous. Absolutely. So even though, like in my, if, even though the city might own something in front of me, if something is dangerous, the city, somebody needs to take responsibility and saying, hey, I know y'all own this, so it seems to me that the Incester Housing should be able to come to the city of Incester and say, hey, this is dangerous. Because if I need to get out on this side where this block is at, there's gonna be a problem, and then that's gonna be another lawsuit.
I'm just gonna be honest with you. That was erected by the city in the eighties because of the, because of the crap, because of the.
I, I know, that's why I said, I didn't wanna really put that out there.
I mean, it is what it is.
I know, but I'm just saying.
And it makes it very difficult.
They place, along with, because they got developers developing, they should make it a concern to the city. Even if the city not looking at it that a way.
We, we, we've, we've talked with a couple of the city departments about it, with our developers. There's, there's different opinions from various different apartments, so it, we are trying to have those conversations. We want to be part of that conversation.
I'm talking more about, I guess, the Denby area, because you got homeowners that live on Hickory, you got homeowners that.
Can't get to their house off of.
Got homeowners that live off of Williams. In, in other words, like, I can't get to my house unless I come from Colorado.
Right, or Andover.
I came down Pine, it's no use for me coming down.
Or Annapolis. Or Annapolis.
It was just some snow, or it could be anything, like, you only got one way into your house. This is like building a house. You have to have so many doors to get in and out, so many windows, so many.
If I was a developer, I would demand it, or I say, I'm taking my money and I'm going to another city.
That's why I asked, were they still meeting with, with?
Right.
With public, y'all have public hearings still on this issue?
Not on the street issue, no.
I mean, just on the development over there, the new, the new development that's coming in housing. You still got public meetings?
Yeah, we, we still having informational meetings pretty regularly.
When are they, are they set?
I don't know when the next one is off the top of my head. I wanna say it's in the next coming, coming week.
Can you forward that information to Charlie? And Charlie will forward to us, maybe a couple, a couple of us will go to their next meeting? That's a big concern.
It is.
We can already take a vote on it right now. Any other questions? So we can vote on this request.
I, I did get this one information from our attorney. He's, I'm assuming, listening. Uh, he confirmed the city attorney is in full support of this proposal. That's in front of us right now.
Oh, the city attorney?
The city attorney. City of Incester's attorney, yeah.
No more questions?
No more questions.
We can take a vote?
Thank you for the conversation and happy to answer the questions. Anytime.
Notice is hereby given in accordance to the Michigan zoning enabling act one-ten of two thousand and six, as amended by PA twelve of two thousand and eight, and has been provided under this act. The city of Inkster Zoning Board of Appeals has conducted this public hearing on Thursday, October the thirtieth at six PM. As the applicant, the Inkster Housing Commission has requested variances for forty-five hundred Inkster Road, Inkster, Michigan. Commonly, commonly known as Denby Terrace to the zoning ordinance of section one-five-five dash dot zero-six-one. That specifies a lot size and setback. All in favor of approving this variance request by the city of Inkster Housing Commission?
Somebody has to, I'm sorry. Somebody has to move it though, right, that it be approved?
I forgot, because I was ready to go, yeah, well, I believe it wasn't done, I was gonna ask for them, I was gonna ask for that, and I'm like, what did I?
Something wrong?
Okay, back to, okay, so, back to Inkster Housing Commission has requested the variance of forty-five hundred Inkster Road, Inkster, Michigan, four-eight-one-four-one. Commonly known as Denby Terrace to the zoning ordinance of section one-five-five point zero-six-one. That is specific, that specifies lot size and setback requirements. Do I hear a motion?
I move to request for one-time exemption to the setback requirements of Inkster Housing Commission's administration building at forty-five hundred Inkster Road. Which was constructed before our current zoning policies were enacted, be approved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say no. The ayes have it, I've been wanting to do that a long time.
I make the motion, we adjourn.
Johnson, Johnson, okay, I got to that part, y'all get me. Adjournment.
Motion to, motion to adjourn.
Jeez, okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Y'all didn't give me time to get there, okay. Motion carried. We will approve the variance request by the Inkster Housing Commission for forty-five hundred Inkster Road, Inkster, Michigan, four-eight-one-four-one.
I know I may be out of order, because the meeting is over. But we do need to make a correction with regard to them saying she was the chairman of that last meeting. I was, I was.
She was, she chaired.
But they called her the chairman, right?
She was for that meeting in June.
Okay.
You got minutes from June.
Those minutes.
I know, I'm just saying.
She was the chair for nobody.